Let's go ahead and pull this together. Call is being ordered. Roll call, please.
Mayor Rankin.
He'll be present shortly.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Solia?
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
Councilmember Montano?
Here.
Councilmember Walter?
Here.
Councilmember Woolridge?
She's walking.
Walk into her.
Vice Mayor, we have a quorum.
We have a quorum. I'd like to take a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is granted. Let's go.
Need a motion to adjourn from executive session?
Motion to adjourn from executive session?
We have motion to second adjourn to executive session from executive session. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance, please. Laura? The invocation be first, then we do the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time. And Father, we ask that you show us how to be good stewards over the positions that you have placed us in. We thank you, Lord, for revealing truths and for allowing people to do those things that are right by you and by other people. Help us to make decisions that are beneficial to all. We ask all this in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains us, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next order of business, call the public for public comment on issues within jurisdiction of town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask to let a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noted for discussion in legal action. There are forms in the back. You'll bring it up to Maria, please. And the first one I have tonight is Sherri George.
Oops. Good evening, Mayor Rankin and council members. My name is Sherri George, and I am the chairman of the Santan Valley Substance Abuse Coalition, which also serves families and individuals in the town of Florence. A coalition member, Dr. Sherri Thomas, contacted and researched through the governor's office and policy development and government relations the validity of amending the Florence Town Ordinance, Chapter 152. The following response was received back from Aidan Fleming, Legislative Liaison for Policy Development and Government Relations. I apologize on the tardiness of my email after speaking to you earlier this week. After reading ARS 133411, it appears to me that there are several obstacles from a city from moving the boundaries of a drug-free school zone in the manner you described. They are: Drug-free school zone means the area within 300 feet of a school or its accompanying grounds; any public property within 1,000 feet of a school or its accompanying grounds; a school bus stop or on any school bus or bus contracted to transport pupils to any school. Emphasis added. ARS 13-3111. While the local governing board is required to set the boundaries pursuant to Title 15, the law is very clear to include the outermost limits of the accompanying grounds, not simply drawing a direct line from building to building, which would essentially shrink the zone as many schools have extensive grounds. I would assume that a school bus stop would be more detrimental to the zoning of a marijuana dispensary since they are usually some of the outermost locations. As this is a state law, in my reading, the city would not have the authority to change the boundary unless a change to the state statute was passed and adopted. Since I am not an attorney, this should not be construed as legal advice, merely my interpretation of the written statute. I, as I'm sure Superintendent Hupenthal, would like to know if dispensaries were to pop up unlawfully near school sites. I hope you will pass along any outcome in your city. And I would like to submit a copy of this to the council.
Okay.
This ordinance is in place for safety, not convenience. Other points I would like to make. One in 10 kids currently get marijuana from someone with a medical marijuana card in Pinal County. Colorado federal prosecutor John Walsh has stated that there has been an alarming substantial spike in marijuana abuse by young people with the proliferation of the dispensaries. Between 53.9 and 62% of kids under 15 who use the gateway drug marijuana go on to use hardcore drugs. If this happened to your child, how would you feel? Would you fight to allow this dispensary to go in? Please choose the health and welfare of Florence and its surrounding communities. Please note, the Florence Unified School District is also part of the Santan Valley area. And back to surrounding communities, our kids, or is it all about the revenue? A change to this ordinance would violate state and federal law. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Parento? Did I get it? Was that close? Now let's see how you say it.
Actually, I had to ask my husband the day we were married. How do you say our last name? And we pronounce it Peronto, as in Toronto, Canada.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an honor and a privilege to be here tonight, being able to share my freedom of speech. Actually, I'm speaking on behalf of Dr. Sherri Thomas. She was not able to come tonight. And so this is her prepared statement. Dr. Sherri Thomas. My name is Dr. Sharon Thomas. I am a minister and teacher living in Pinal County. For 10 years, I have gone into the Maricopa County jail system to do one-on-one counseling and have also filled in for the recovery classes within the jail system. I have a badge to teach recovery classes at the Dream Center in Phoenix. Recently, I was given a badge to go into the Pinal County jail system to teach and deal with those with addictions. In the course of my years of counseling dealing with people destroying their lives through addictions, I have come to the realization of how many entry drugs, how really dangerous these entry drugs are. In most every case, I discovered that most people who are addicts started on marijuana and/or prescription drugs and advanced to more dangerous drugs. I see all kinds of people in the jail systems for which there are all kinds of violations of the law. Many crimes can be traced back to some kind of substance abuse. This is a serious problem and growing. Let me say here, if someone feels they need marijuana because of an illness and their doctor concurs, I have no problem with this. My concern is the health of our community, especially the children of our county. As you look at research from different states, you find that having these dispensaries out on the streets of our towns and cities and not watched, abuse does increase. I believe that marijuana as a restricted drug needs to be in a controlled location, such as pharmacies and hospitals, where it can be closely watched. Problems have occurred in the locations where these dispensaries have been allowed to be available in city areas, for instance, in Berkeley at the Greenleaf dispensary. Nancy and Bruce Chamberlain, members of the Spalding-Channing Neighborhood Association, said they do not like people lighting joints on the streets outside Greenleaf dispensary's building. Quote, "The impact is comparable to having a bar open around the corner from our house with the members outside drinking in the streets." End quote. The two said in a letter. They continued, quote, "We have walked our child home from dinner at local restaurants through clouds of pot smoke." End quote. "We protect people from secondhand cigarette smoke. What about secondhand marijuana smoke?" Another wrote to the planning commission about how the neighborhood had changed since the dispensary showed up. "I have seen this neighborhood go from a quiet neighborhood where we are familiar with most of the people around and about to this hangout spot with strangers leaving trash, smoking weed, and hanging out in their cars." This is from Berkeley Targets, third marijuana outlet. "Your charge by the people of Florence is the protection of their lifestyle within your town. How could you even consider allowing this place to open if you care about the health and welfare of your town? Could you be more interested in the revenue that you believe will increase? I see the results of the availability of drugs on a daily basis within jails. You have the ability to block this availability on the streets of your town to protect life in Florence and to make it harder for the children to come in contact with drugs. What will you do?" Respectfully submitted, Dr. Sharon Thomas, CEO and pastor, senior pastor of Dr. Sharon Thomas Ministries, Hunt Highway, Santan Valley, Arizona. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Laura? Lori?
Honorable members of the town of Florence Council, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Laura Gimmeling, and I am a board member of the Santan Valley Substance Abuse Coalition. But most of all, I am an educator and concerned parent. During the last town council meeting to decide on the opening of a marijuana dispensary, I exposed my increased concern about the impact of the opening of this business and the example that this fact would give to our most unprotected citizens, the youth of this town and the surrounding areas. It was with dismay that I learned that those in charge of protecting these citizens would go all the way to do the opposite by considering a motion to amend the town's planning and zoning ordinance to accommodate this marijuana dispensary. During the early stages of their lives, children learn the behaviors taught by adults, and later on, they learn from what they are exposed to. When we, as adults, are setting the example of acceptance of marijuana by opening a business like this, we are giving them the message that marijuana is okay. The use of marijuana by young children has a long-lasting impact on the structure and function of their brains that will affect them in every area of their lives, including their mental and physical health, relationship problems, learning and memory that will result in less academic and career success compared to their peers who came from a similar background. I personally have seen this happen to my son, of whom I spoke about during the last meeting. My son is a smart young man who unfortunately uses marijuana. He started in his early teen years and went from smoking marijuana to using other core and terrible drugs. As parents, this has been a nightmare that we would never wish to our worst enemy. I would like to take this opportunity to clarify the inappropriate comment made by a town council member who stated that if children start using drugs, it is because of their parents' poor parenting skills. According to the Non-MacKid organization, based on a study conducted by Dr. Aidan Thomas McGillen from the Treatment Research Institute, the brain development continues into the early 20s. And the last part to develop is the decision-making region, which means that children who engage in risky behavior may not have the ability to judge situations as we adults do. Also, according to the Non-MacKid organization, it is during the teen years when children have the need to be accepted by different social groups other than their families and are also looking for their own identity. Peer pressure, the media, and environment take over. And no matter what children have been taught, no matter the good example of parents with excellent or poor parenting skills, no matter any healthy upbringing, children will engage in risky behaviors like substance abuse if that is what they choose to do. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, the citizens of the town of Florence elected you to guide them and protect them. Do so. Make every decision thinking on the well-being of the whole community, not based on the interest of just a few. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
Somebody's phone? Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. As I attended the September planning and zoning meeting, and I advised, I didn't advise, since I'm not an attorney, but I did read Arizona Statute 133411, which does state it's grounds, not buildings, that we're dealing with here. Beyond that, I wanted to bring up a possible issue as well. It's not clear that the use, i.e. having a medical marijuana dispensary within the hospital at 450 West Adamsville, is actually consistent with the town of Florence's general plan. And if it's not consistent with the town's general plan, then it could be considered spot zoning, which is clearly illegal. Additionally, something else to look into is the idea of putting a 500-foot easement or right-of-way for Hunt Highway, Felix Road, State Route 287, 79, and 79B. This might also present potential issues for the town. And those would come in with the idea that if B2 and L1 zoning exists along those roads and you're going beyond and arbitrarily or capriciously preventing, rather, the dispensaries from being located there, you know, you might run into issues there as well. I would just encourage council to actually look into these issues, speak with town council. Jim, I'm sorry I'm adding to your phone. But appreciate the time. Thanks.
Thank you, Jim. Ruth?
Mayor, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ruth Harrison. Tonight, you will hold the history and the future of Florence in your hands when you discuss the Kuhn Building, one of only a few existing examples of transformed Sonoran architecture still standing on Main Street. Originally built as an L-shaped adobe residence and shop, it was later remodeled to become Florence's first telephone central office, where operators made sure that calls went through. Later, it became the law office of Ernest McFarlane, the man who helped lead Arizona in becoming a modern state. Ernest McFarlane won elections to be Pinal County Attorney and a Pinal County Superior Court Judge. He also spent several years in private practice in Florence. His office was in the Kuhn Building. Later, he was elected U.S. Senator from Arizona. He introduced legislation to start the Central Arizona Project. He also became known as the father of the GI Bill, which continues to provide housing and education opportunities for veterans. He became Senate Majority Leader and was an advisor to presidents. He founded a television company before becoming governor of Arizona, when he helped to establish Arizona State Park System. Later, he was elected to the Arizona Supreme Court and served as chief justice. Ernest McFarlane has been described as being down-to-earth, a man of the people, and the incarnation of decency. Ernest McFarlane was a great man. He called Florence home. He was one of us. He and his family acquired the original courthouse in Florence and donated it to the state park system. It was renamed in his honor and, for a time, housed his archives. He saved an important historic building for us. Now we have an opportunity to return the favor. The Kuhn Building is an important historic structure. It has contained a lot of life through the years, and it deserves to continue to live. Once restored and renovated, in the short term, it could be used as offices for town staff. Later, perhaps, it could serve as a business incubator, providing space for business entrepreneurs. The town manager's report this month says that the town staff is considering the acquisition of the Pinal County Federal Credit Union Building in town. I believe that any funds allocated for the proposed purchase of the credit union property be directed instead to the restoration and renovation of an irreplaceable piece of Florence's history and an essential part of modern-day Main Street, the Kuhn Building. I believe that the best part of the original town of Florence is in its historic buildings. Pinal County has just invested millions of dollars in the 1891 county courthouse in Florence. I believe that the town must focus its efforts on preserving the elements that make it special. The past and the present live together in downtown Florence. Once an historic building is gone, burned by fire or destroyed by neglect or brought down by a bulldozer, it is gone forever. I believe that the town must do its utmost to preserve, restore, and renovate its stock of historic buildings. Our past, our present, and our future all come together in this town that we love. I believe that we can do this. I believe that we must. Thank you.
Thank you. Miguel?
Dr. Miguel Olivas, I'm here to represent as a government liaison for Healing Healthcare 3, Inc., and I am from the town of Coolidge. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. The late Congressman Sonny Bono was once asked by reporters how he went from being a real liberal Hollywood type to being a conservative in Congress. And his only reply was, "I opened a restaurant." I don't know how many people in here actually ever opened a business, but in my capacity, representing organizations like Healing Healthcare 3, Inc., we look at the political legal, we look at the economic and the social impact of every project. During the planning and zoning meeting, there was a lot brought to light, I think Jim Nub from the county attorney's office and many others, and those from the school district, who brought up the proximity of the request in the conditional use permit to the school. And I've mentioned before that the vision of the organization I represent is to always ensure that the social impact of the community is considered when making any of these decisions. With that said, considering the proximity to the school, proximity to the land owned by the school, and any future projects that may become of that land of the school, on behalf of Healing Healthcare 3, Inc., I ask that Section 8A, the conditional use permit application, proposed medical marijuana dispensary and highway business commercial zone property located in 450 West Adamsville Road, Florence, Arizona, be withdrawn. Additionally, in consideration of the buffer zones that were established in the proposed change of the ordinances and everything else that went into this, we ask that Section 10, subsection A, which is ordinance number 613, I won't read through the entire paragraph, also be withdrawn. It is the responsibility of every business owner to not only look at what is legally right, but more importantly, what is ethically and morally right. And it isn't because it's oftentimes legally what's right to do, but more importantly, in behalf of the children in this community and the concerns of the nonprofits who have voiced their concerns, members of the law enforcement. We are not giving up in the town, but what, over the next couple of months, Healing Healthcare 3, Inc. will do is seek a location that will satisfy the community because despite some public outpour, what have you. In 2010, the voters of Arizona spoke. And whether some of us may not like the law, the law still exists. But as a business owner, Rakesh Palwan does not look to force his business upon the town in any manner that would infringe on the lives of the children in this community. I thank you for letting me go past my three minutes, mayor. I thank you, town council. And we look forward to working with you and other members of this community in the future, perhaps to find a more viable location that doesn't adversely impact this community. And I thank you. And God bless you.
Thank you, Miguel. Item number eight on our agenda, the public hearing. We've heard a request to pull it. Now, we have our options of either opening the public hearing or just going ahead and councilman deciding. If I don't hear or see anybody really wanting to open the public hearing, we'll just go on to the next item. Tommy, do you have anything?
They can wait until the next item after the consent.
Consent agenda?
Item nine, consent. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. A. Appointment of Sean Gibson to the Parks and Recreation Board with a term to expire December 31, 2014. B. Authorization to forward a favorable recommendation to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control on behalf of the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce's application for a special event liquor license for November 7, 2013, from 4:30 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. for their first Thursday event. C. Approval of accepting the register of demand ending August 31, 2013, in the amount of $1,927.32. D. Authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with Waterworks Engineers LLC for professional engineering services for fiscal year 2013, 2014.
Does any member of the council like any, would like anything taken off the consent agenda? Any member of the general public? Hearing none, I need a motion?
I can make a motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
Second. We have a motion, second, to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Item 10, unfinished business. A. Ordinance number 600-13, discussion, approval, disapproval, and second reading of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, amending the town of Florence Code Ordinance as Title 15, Land Usage, Chapters 152, Medical Marijuana, Section 152-02, 152.02, definitions in Section 152.04, distance separation requirements, PZC-27-13-ORD. First reading held September 16, 2013.
Members of the council, after reviewing this and listening to public comment and talking with staff, it appears that we may have some disagreements on the way this is written and worded. In lieu of the applicant withdrawing his request for a conditional use permit, and because of some of the terminology in the recommended ordinance, I would like to have this measure tabled and brought back to later date. If that's agreeable, I'd need a motion.
Can we have discussion before?
Sure. Go ahead.
Basically, to kind of echo what I had said in previous meetings, it's kind of difficult to understand how seemingly rational people would object to having a controlled area to have this type of facility when the alternative, and I don't know if they realize that by not having a facility that is specified in a designated location, that people with cards are able to grow the stuff right next to a school, right next to a church, all the places that we don't want to see it. What we're looking at here is creating a controlled environment in a designated area where this can be very well monitored, very well regulated, and very well secured. We can specify a We can specify additional security on it. You need to understand that the alternative is, if they're able to grow it legally with a marijuana card, they're going to grow it right next to your school, they're going to grow it right next to your church. You need to consider that.
If there are dispensaries within 25 miles of Florence, they legally cannot grow it.
And, and in addition to that, what I'd like to see is to strip this back to what the state language says, or at least more aligned with what the state language is. I think that it's only fair to our citizens that have this need to have it available in a reasonably close area. I mean, like I said before, we've got citizens that would like a grocery store in town. And these are capable citizens of driving or, or doing things for themselves. What we're looking at as an alternative with that, with that distance, is we're looking at people that have a medical condition that are going to need to drive 10 miles or 25 miles or whatever to pick up their medication, and that's not right.
Anybody in town who has a medical condition or needs medicine has to drive the same amount, has to drive the same distance to a pharmacy. We all have to do that, make the same trip.
I guess we see that there's still...
In the future, that might not be the same thing. What if we had the ability to have a Walgreens here? We would have a reasonable distance to go and purchase our pharmacy.
I think because of the language, that we're out of compliance with state laws that we...
I agree, we should, we should go back and streamline it closer to what state regulations say. I, I don't think, there were, there are two reasons why I wouldn't have supported the issue today, and one of them was because of the proximity of the school, which is against the state language. The other is because we're, we're trying to pigeonhole this into an area, and this may be a reason why we're having all this historical data of negative impact to communities, we're trying to push this into areas where nobody wants to live.
Again, we can see that there's a lot of discussion on it. Tom?
First of all, I'd like to ask staff, what is the reasoning for changing the distance from 660 to 500? Who would like to answer that question? Go for it.
Vice Mayor, Mayor, members of the council, whether a few lines of thought, I guess, with the, with the ordinance, on one hand it was making it more restrictive, on the other hand, it was trying to counterbalance some of those, some of those restrictions. So that if you had the buffer along major, major roadways, you had the extra sensitive uses that were, that were named, that to bring it a little bit more in line with the, some of the state statute, like Member Selaya is saying, the state regulations, really the only one that there is on medical marijuana dispensary, is 500 feet from a public school, period. And so, this is a challenging issue, because just, just like the law, it's 50% of the people voted for it and 50 against it, and any, any change we make in the ordinance, 50% of the people probably will like it and 50% won't. We try to come, we try to find the middle, middle ground there. It's tightened up in some areas and slightly reduced in some other areas to be in line with the state requirements.
But doesn't the state regulation state that we can set our own priorities on this?
Absolutely, absolutely, it absolutely does.
So why, to me, putting this from 660 to 500 is a moot point, is putting the cart before the horse. We already have the right to do that.
We have, we have an ordinance in place that, that meets, meets the state standards, and it, and it, obviously, it's proven challenging to find a location in the town of Florence. The I Day came up with the, with the hospital, obviously, because of the additional ground that the school has plans to, to build on at some point, that presents some, some issues. So, it's, it's fairly challenging, to say the, to say the least.
Well, the second point with the hospital, which isn't a hospital at the present time, will it be? I hope so. Will it be able to have this dispensary in there? I don't know. Because if you look at one of the rules that we have in there already, it states that marijuana cannot be used or dispensed in a building has other food being processed. And I don't know of any hospital that doesn't produce its own products for their people to eat. And that still is not in any of these changes. So, I just think we need to look at this a lot more thoroughly, before we start making changes to something that already works.
Well, on the Felix Road, Hunt Highway, State Route 287, State Route 79, 79B, we're singling out this one type business, making them be over 150 yards off the highway, which, you know, 500 feet, I don't know, you know, of any other business that we require to have set that far back off the highway and expect them to do what you do. I, I don't like that. I, you know, we're, you know, on one hand, we're saying we don't want them near schools or libraries and stuff, yet with this part of the, the ordinance, we're narrowing it down to where are they going to have it? I mean, you know, we keep making all these requirements. I think we're to the point where you just say, we either don't want one in town, or, or let's get real. I mean, it's a legitimate business, and I don't see why we're discriminating against them when they're very well controlled. If you look at the requirements by the state, it's beyond, they're better controlled than a pharmacy. There's, there's, but, you know, people need to check and see what, what we're really talking about here. I think this ordinance needs some work done before we make any act, take any action on it.
Mayor Rankin, I'd like to make a motion to lay this on the table. And I'd like to see that each proposal be separated on its own agenda item, so that we can have proper discussion with each one.
Let me ask, let me ask you this, Ruben. Could you make it in your motion that it goes back to staff, and that prior to coming back to council, that a work session is held with staff and council on it?
That'd be fine, also assistance from the county attorney's office, if we need that, but if Jim can handle it, that'd be great. I just want to make sure we do this properly and we have the opportunity to say, are we meeting the needs of the state, and are we meeting the needs of the community?
I don't, I don't think that assistance from the county attorney would be beneficial, because he's already made a stance, and I don't think we'd get a, get a honest or a complete perspective from him.
I agree, I think our attorney can take care of any of our legal issues.
So, the motion's going to be tabled, and prior to coming back to council, a work session with staff and council will be held.
I'll second.
And each item be separated to its own agenda item.
Okay. Yeah, for the work session? Work session, I'm glad.
Oh, for the...
We're certain we'd lump, we'd lump in. And I think, got a second on that?
Yes.
Again, I have the question that still our town attorney hadn't got back to me, Mark, and I've heard the county attorney, you know, is it from the property or from the buildings? I understand probably it is from the property line, side of the building. That was a big question for me. I, I agree with you, Bill, on the limitations of where it can and cannot be, and I think it needs to be looked at. I think other communities have probably already addressed this, and we should be taking a look at some of their ordinances. Having said that, I'll call for the question, all in favor of the, motion? Aye? All opposed? Motion carries.
Item 11, new business. A, discussion, approval, disapproval to enter into an intergovernmental agreement between the Penile County Division of Animal Care and Control in the town of Florence to provide animal control services. Chief Hughes.
Mayor, members of the council, we've, we've been working without an intergovernmental agreement now for almost a year, and during that time, we've worked on a new intergovernmental agreement, and also during that time, we've worked real well with the county. We've met with Kay Dixon and her people, and we've hammered out what I think is a really good agreement over this past year. We've handled approximately 150 calls for service of animal barking, and actually, it came down to where I think we had actually only five animal bites that involved dogs and humans. The county's come out, we've worked well together and handled all of various calls for service. I think it's economically a, a good service that we're getting from the county.
Okay. Let me, I want to go to that page five, starts for disposal, euthanasia. Have you looked at that? And explain that to me. If, if a citizen calls in and they have a pet that needs to be put down because of illness or injury, are they charged?
I have Kay Dixon here, from the county, who could answer that.
Hi, Kay.
Good evening, thank you for letting me speak. If they bring the animal to the shelter for humane euthanasia, and it, they own the animal, then they're charged for it, yes. We don't go to their homes and do euthanasia.
You don't do that anymore? So, if I had an animal that needed to be put down, I'd have to take it to the pound?
You would, if it was too large, or you weren't able to get it to us, we would probably call the state vet to make sure we had clearance and advise them of the circumstances before we would go to your home and do that, perform that.
And there is a charge?
There is a charge.
What, $35 or something like that?
I don't, I'm not going to answer it, I don't remember.
You're charging us a lot of money.
I'm sorry?
You're charging us a lot of money.
All the costs in the contract are all direct, you pay no indirect costs at all for the service.
I know, but it's still a lot of money.
Yes, it is.
Anybody have any question, Miss Dixon?
Doesn't get a charge, I see there is no charge for euthanasia, is that, is that at the town?
Yes, if we hold the animal, if we hold the animal, by state statute, we need to hold the animal 72 hours, and we take it one step forward and do three business days, we don't include holidays or times we're not open. If there's some identification with the animal, state statute says we hold it five days. If we think we know where the owner is, we'll hold it for a couple more days, but we don't charge the city anything past what the state law says. So, after the state, after the state time has expired, we do our best to get the animal adopted or get it sent to a rescue. If the animal's sick, aggressive, just not, it's just not something that we're going to be able to move to a rescue or adoption, then we will perform humane euthanasia.
Let me, I got one. Go ahead, Tom.
If an animal, dog, attacks somebody, and it is picked up by the pound, or by you folks, now, is there any information gets back to this town saying what has happened to this animal, and it's being back released to the owner, or it's being put down? Is there any information like that gets back to our town, so that the person that got bit, or whatever else, can refer to that to find out what happened to that dog?
Every situation's different. Anything that we do, if the town wants the information, you can call and get it. We typically don't write a report and forward it to you, we write a report on every instant. If it's a criminal case, obviously, the victim is asked to be a witness and, and come and testify in court, and they have some say, if the judge asks for their opinion there. But typically, we will not call unless we're asked for the information, we're just too overwhelmed, we just have...
So, they could call you and find out?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Another, another question I have for you, Kay, is feral cats? If people have a cat problem, and they trap a cat, or, and it's a feral cat, it's not a, it's not a known ownership, are they still charged?
No, any strays, they're not, we, we may charge the city, but we are opening a TNR program, which is trap, neuter, and release. There's some specifications that go with that program, and it has to be something the city wants to embrace in the neighborhoods as well. And in those cases, we have a lot of donated money that helps pay for TNR.
And you're trying to become a no-kill facility, is that correct?
Hopefully, by the end of, within five years, we will become a no-kill facility,
I have no other questions, any other council member have any questions? Kay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
I, I just wanted to say, I've, I've been out to the facility, she runs a very facility out there. One of the things that I noticed, there's a few communities that do have city trucks, and I don't think we're there yet, what, is that something that maybe we can look into for the next agreement here?
We could, we, I did look at the startup cost, and by the time you get a truck and the training that goes into it, it's, it's pretty expensive to get into the animal control business. Plus, there's a lot of, I'm talking to Kay, there's, there's just a lot more that goes into it now with the, all the things that she, the regulations that she has to take care of, and so...
What, what I'm looking at is maybe a designated officer for our particular area. Are you running somebody dispatched out of our area, or is it as an on-call type thing?
How it works with the city of Florence, if we are called to your city by your police department or your town manager, then we respond. It has to come through your dispatch. There are a few citizens that do call us direct, that we know we have a standing responsibility, and the, the police department has gone ahead and given us authority to take care of their cats.
So, do you have agreements with other communities where you have a full-time person just dedicated for their...
Yes.
Their area, and then they take the animals out to the animal shelter?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's kind of what I'm, I'm looking at. Have you looked into something like that?
We, I just looked into the, the cost of the, the equipment and the personnel cost, and, and having looked at that, it was, it was much more economical to remain in the contract with, with Kay and the animal control. Now, our officers do, we do have catch poles, and if, and if an animal is nonviolent, or it doesn't look like there's a problem, they can pick it up, and we do hold it until, till they can come by the next day, so that we're not calling them out in the middle of the night. So, we do some of it on our own, and we also, we do still cite for, for loud, for barking animals, we take care of a lot of that on, all on our own.
So, we're operating okay with what we have right now?
Yes. We, we handle most calls, as I said, we handle a lot of them on our own, that, that we don't call them. We'll, we'll, we'll pick up the strays, and, and we do have indoor-outdoor kennels that are air-conditioned right now, and we pick them up, the strays, and put them in our kennel, and then the county comes by and picks them up the following day.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Again, Kay, thank you very much, appreciate it. Need a motion?
Make a motion that we enter into the intergovernmental agreement with, between Penile County Division of Animal Care and the Control of the town of Florence.
Second. We have a motion and a second to enter into an intergovernmental agreement between Penile County Division of Animal Care and Control in the town of Florence to provide animal control services. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item 11B, discussion, approval, disapproval to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the Arizona Department of Fire, Building and Life Safety Office of the State Fire Marshal and the Town of Florence Fire Department. Chief Zick will be presenting.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before you, we have an MOU between us and the State Fire Marshal to take over all the plan review and inspections of all the state, county, and public school buildings located in the town of Florence. Chief Kemp and I met with Bob Barger from the state. This is pretty much the standard agreement that they give to all jurisdictions that are willing and, and wanting to do their own inspections. Attached with that, you do see our fee schedule that was previously done, so I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Does the council have any questions?
No, just a comment, I, I think this is a long time coming. We've had, as, as a facility manager or department head, we have multiple facilities here in Florence, and have, in the past, found it very difficult to get state fire marshals to come down and do our inspections, and I think this is a great benefit to the town.
I make a motion to enter to a memorandum of understanding between the Arizona Department of Fire, Building and Life Saving Office of State Fire Marshal and the Town of Florence Fire Department.
Second. Second.
I have a first and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item C.
Item eleven C. Discussion and possible action on acquisition of Acune Building in downtown Florence and consideration of options for the building if acquired. Mark Yakoff will be presenting.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. A challenging item in, in front of you because you're all aware of the building, the Acune Building downtown Florence next to the fitness center. And, and there's no, there's no doubt about the, the history of the, of the building. It's extremely significant. The building is sitting on Main Street, it's in our historic district. It is a unique, unique building with a very rich history. Unfortunately, the last forty, fifty years or so of the history really has been a history of neglect. You can clearly see what the building looks like on, on the outside. Provided a few images to show you what the building looks like on, on the inside. It's, it's gotten to that point where, a couple of years ago, we worked with the owner to, to put the supports that you can see, those leaning boards there and on the outside you can see the boards that were added. There was some structural stabilization that was done to the building a while back. However, the building continues to deteriorate. The plaster is chipping off, there are holes in the building, the, the building is not water, watertight. Obviously, the pigeons have become, contributed to the building kind of deteriorating and also creating the situation out along the walkway. So, we're presented here with a discussion tonight about whether to proceed or not to proceed with the acquisition of the building. The owner of the property is willing to deed, deed this property to the Town of Florence. So really, I kind of want to separate that from the other actions that, that, you know, the other options of what could be done with, with the building. First and foremost, there's a question on the table of whether the town is interested in taking this building, have it, and having it donated by the, by the owner with no, with no restrictions on this building. The history of the ownership is a little bit interesting. In recent years, before the current owner acquired the building, the IDA had the, Florence IDA had the building for a while. Before the Florence IDA had the building, guess who, who owned it before them? The Town of, the Town of Florence. So it's been kind of shuffling around a little bit, but obviously not much has been done to, to preserve, restore, or even in, in, you know, over the last decade to protect the building. One of the big issues is that there was some exterior siding, there were some, there were some features to the building that were removed. And once those, once that occurred, it sped up the deterioration. Once the water can get into the, into the adobe, we all know how, what happens after that. So, yes, some issues with the north-facing adobe, adobe wall that are, that are clear. Anyhow, there's, if you were to do a restoration on this building, we did get estimates from Swan Architects, it's just one estimate. Probably would, if we want to go that route, obviously we'd go out through the normal procurement process and get various estimates. But we do have a set of construction plans that were prepared, two thousand and five, two thousand and six, when there was some historical grant money to do restorations like this. That restoration never occurred. The state swept any of those funds, put them into, into, into different state funds just to get by at the time. Back then, it probably would have cost about a hundred and fifty thousand or so to do the restoration. Right now, it's about one seventy-seven to do, to do the restoration. It would cost you actually a little bit more to build in, a new building on the site. Keep in mind that the building is about, it's just under a thousand square feet, so it's a really small space. There are some uses for it. It is, it is contributing in the historic district, but the cost is a factor. So should the town be willing to accept the, the donation, just want you to know that we have to do something, the town has to do something with, with the building one way or another. And that, that involves either stabilizing the building just to prevent, just to keep it up and prevent any further deterioration. Possibly ultimately, spending more money to completely restore the building and/or if the deterioration continues, the building obviously won't be able to save if, if it goes like this too much longer, so.
Yeah. Okay. Open up the discussion.
I think it, I'd like to see us take it and at least we'll move forward on it one way or the other. Maybe, maybe get some of the people from the, that want to, that are from the historic committees and stuff, that want to work with us and maybe we can work out something to do with it, like, I don't know, maybe, maybe refurbish it or turn it into a little pocket park and use some of the brick from it to do that or, I don't know. We, you know, just have the, maybe have a committee and, and work on it. But I think the town, if we took ownership, at least it'll either be fixed up or it'll, or it'll go to the wayside or we'll maybe turn it into a little pocket park or something and use the red brick to make a little wall around it and plant a tree in the middle or something where people can sit and visit or whatever. I don't know. But I think the towns, yes, we ought to take it and make sure something's done with it because it's been an eyesore for quite some time.
Thanks, Bill.
I, I think it's a, it's a very important historical building and in the past, we have supported, providing financial aid for a lot of the historical sites. I mean, we've, we've done the Brunnen Cant, we've done, we've contributed towards the eighteen ninety-one, the Silver King. We're doing our best to, to keep the McFarland open, but at, at some point, we need to understand that our, we can only spread our resources so far. By taking this building, we're also assuming the safety liabilities that come with it and, which was going to require an additional investment in, in bringing this into an area where somebody's not going to hit, get hurt from falling debris. That's the difficulty. We could, we may be able to enforce something on the existing owner to have them do the cleanup and, and still have the result of an area that's, that's safe and, you know, maybe he may, we can assist in, in, in maybe putting some type of park facility in there with the owner, but I don't, I don't know that we want to go and have to invest an additional hundred and some thousand dollars to have the, the area cleaned up. You know, there, you can look in, in different communities. I was in Philadelphia, it's probably been about five or ten years ago where, I believe it was Benjamin Franklin's house, where it's no longer there, but there's still the outline and there's still a designated spot in recognition of where it's at. There's the ability to do something that, like that in honor of the building. You know, you, you have a footprint right there and, and some type of a plaque or something that says here used to lie the, the building. But to just keep pulling in properties like that, I mean, we've, we've got to be responsible in, in spending our expenses on, on these and I don't know if we have the resources to do that.
The building when we had it was turned over to the IDA and it's on the record they promised to redo that building. Instead, they sold it. That wasn't good to start with. Is it an important part of history? Yes, it is. What we do with it, I'm not sure yet. I do know that that skylight on top is architecturally historic. And no matter what we do, we need to try to save that. If we can save the whole building, fine, but I don't know at this time. Right now, we're here to vote on the town taking possession again. I would hope that the decisions on this building will come back to our council when it's time to make the final decision on what happens to that building. Thank you.
If, if I can add that before, before you go to the next person. In the past, I believe it was, was it Abel, Abel Rodriguez's house? They had decided that, that they were going to take that down and, and a private group came together, did whatever they could to, I, I think maybe if we could find something and somebody in the private sector to step up, maybe some citizens that are, that are dedicated to, to leading a project like this, we can get a citizen out there to, to start a drive to, to maybe save it. But, you know, we should explore those options.
Ruben.
One of the things really important is that the town tried a while back through the Heritage Fund to collect money to try and protect this, this building. Now it belongs to the Langley Momentum Historical. And what's interesting is that just because it started to have issues where it was unsafe and the pigeons were around there, now we started as a town enforcing safety code violations and ensuring that this is building is safe for people just to walk by. Now, all of a sudden, the owner doesn't want the building anymore and wants it, gives it, wants to give it to the town. But if we knock it down, he has stipulated, oh, we can knock it down and we pay for it, but he wants the land back. And that's not what we're looking for because it says right in our presentation that we pay for it and then he keeps the lot. That's not something we're looking for. I mean, I'd like to see that building saved. It was important. It was actually the first telephone connection area of Pinal County, much less Florence. So, and it has a lot of historical value. I don't know how we could protect it at this point. It's falling apart. If anything, if we could save the front fascia of the wall and then add to it to make it a safer building. But it's, you could look at the pictures and it just, there's cracks up and down, the plaster, the adobes, you know, eroding away. It's going to be difficult to make a decision on this. You know, I'd like to see it, but it belongs to an owner. We going to purchase something from him or accept the donation so he doesn't have to fall in line with our safety concerns? Or should we enforce this on the owner and say, it's your building, you fix it? That or you, you accept the violations you're going to receive?
My understanding on that is that if he tears the lot down, or if he tears the, whoever it is, if they, the owners demolish the building, then they will retain the lot. I think if they sign it over to us, we own the lot and the building if I'm not mistaken or maybe I was misled.
Let me clarify that and I did double check with Mr. Mak, with Mr. Yakoff right before the meeting did start. The owner has basically said that the deed would come over clean with no stipulations. So if it was the decision of the council to modify the building, enhance it, or tear it down, there are no stipulations on that deed. And I just checked with Mr. Yakoff a few minutes ago, so.
Well, that wasn't the, the information we had earlier, but thanks for clearing it up.
I just want to reiterate, I think we'd be better off with the town controlling it and we can move forward because none of the owners have done anything unless we pressured them into it. So I, I think it's time we, you know, do, just take it and do something with it. Set up a committee and see what we want to do with it.
I guess this, it, this building of all the historical buildings in town has a lot, has my heart due to the fact that when you talk about the telephone company, my grandmother ran it. My mother lived there. My grandfather built on the back portion of that building at one time. There's a certain group out there called the Mountain Bell, Mountain Bell Pioneers. At one time, we were approached, I approached them to... How much we pay for this system? I approached them about becoming involved in it and they were receptive to it. The original switchboard out of that, that building is, is gone. It was taken.
It's in the drawer, the other side.
Beat it up. Are we on? See, that building means a lot to me, but I also take a look at the cost factor involved in it. I think that if the town accepts the responsibility of it, it's imperative us to go out and find the private money to invest in this. We can, we can put some of our money into it. But I think if we do, need to go out, I like the suggestions of going out and trying to find the private money to do it. At that point, after we do the private money, we've got to remember that it's just like the hotel. Once we do that, we're not going to be able to get rid of it. So we're going to have to hang on to it for a long time and find a use for it, whether it be renting it out or assuming some sort of a, of a town office in there. But the, the location of it, and remember how the town became and got it. It was because we made an agreement with Quest to go up two stories on their building if the need for, for them to expand their equipment was there. And Tom is right. It was a decision to cut, either come to the town or go to the IDA. At that time, the IDA said that take it and refurbish it and that's why the town council at that time allowed it to go to the IDA rather than the town take over on it. So I think that we need to accept it. I think that we need to take a look after we accept it, just work through the manager and our new person working on it. And let's start going out and finding a foundation, just as we did for the, maybe the McFarlands, maybe the Fulbrights, maybe the Quest or the Mountain Bell Pioneers will become involved in it and come together as a community to restore that building and take it back to what it was. I just, you know, we, we put a lot of money in other buildings, but this is not very big. It may not be very big, but where it sits on Main Street, I think is very important to the historical district not to let that go. And I think it, I, Charles, you have something you want to say?
Yes, sir, Mayor. You know, staff does recommend that, that council authorize us to move forward on, on accepting the, the donation. However, we would need to bring this back to council fairly quick in the next few months because the building is in such dire condition that it will collapse within a few months, five, six months. It's in bad shape.
Have you identified funding for?
We have no, if you are, Mr. Solia, if you are, are you asking that we've looked at it within the town budget?
Correct.
To find that money? We could find that money if so directed, but it may cause other projects to fall to the other side, to the wayside.
So we'd be pushing back CIP projects and?
Most likely.
I think the private money's out there. I think it's just a matter of touching the right people.
That would be my suggestion that we try to find private money and that we not to invest a lot of money in that right now. But to accept it, accept the building without putting our budget on the hook to refurbish it.
Will this, will this be brought back again before us, before we decide to put, push any further money into it? Right now, we're just talking about accepting it as a, as a transfer, a free transfer.
That, that is correct. Before any other decision?
Before we invest or choose to invest any money. Regardless, once we, once we assume ownership of it, we are now liable and responsible for any financial... for any financial, we're stuck.
That is correct. We accept the, the liability of anything-
So basically, what you're asking us for is, uh, to accept ownership with a hundred and, I can't remember, a hundred and some thousand dollar price tag that we need to pay in to the project? One hundred or two hundred, depending on which direction that we go.
Uh, no, sir, Mr. Selaya, let me clarify, um, staff is requesting that we go and accept the donation to the town and come back fairly quickly to, to the council, uh, to make a determination whether we found that private funding to help restore that building, whether town council wants to find the current budget, or whether we move forward with the demolition and create a pocket park, whatever those are, that's gonna be up to council and we'll bring that back.
But, but most probable scenario would be we're spending a hundred and some thousand or two hundred and some thousand to either demolish it or repair it.
Uh, Mr. Selaya, if we, if the, if the town council chooses to demolish the building, it'll be approximately six thousand dollars, and then any amenities that were put in there as far as trees or whatever.
Okay.
Once we-
Okay, I got you.
Once we take ownership of the building, are we gonna look at ensuring that it's at least safe, or what we can do to make it safe?
Once we accept ownership of it, uh, Mr. Ekoff and Carol Michael have already been in there with Swan Architects, there are some liability issues, and this is why we wanna come back to you guys fast and, and not wait around, but we will keep a close eye on that with the weather and make sure if anything happens, we'll take care of it.
Okay.
So can we prolong accepting it until we can find out if we can get private funds?
No.
And then that still becomes a whole responsibility, or is he putting a timeframe on it?
I think, I don't think there's a timeframe on it, I think it, uh, it's gonna fall down.
I think the timeframe's on the building.
That, you know, the way I look at it-
Accept it, then it's his responsibility and not the town's.
Well, he's gonna demolish it, so if, if we don't take it, it's gonna be demolished, is my understanding, they're not gonna fix it up, right?
I, we have not been informed of that unless, Mr. Ekoff, you have an answer for that?
He still might end up doing that, so.
Oh, I thought that's the way it read in there.
I, I don't think that Stacy is gonna rehabilitate it, I think it, it would be, uh, torn down and we wouldn't have anything to say about it. Well, I can't make a motion, but if I made a motion, I'd make it to, uh, for the town to accept it.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion, we accept the property.
Second?
We have a motion, uh, second to accept the human property. Any other discussion? Hearing no, no, call for the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item number twelve, department reports, uh, mayor, council, the department reports in the packet, if you have any questions regarding the reports. I do have one item to add, um, over the last few weeks, uh, the, um, community development, Mr. Michael is moving, Mr. Carol Michael is moving over to Public Works, he's going to be in charge of facilities. We are, we no longer have any, um, building inspectors at this point in time, so i- in the temporary, in this short term, we are contracting with Willdan to assist us with those inspections, and Mr. Ekoff is evaluating that position that Mr. Michael was in to see what we can do with that moving forward.
I, I also noticed that you have, uh, Ms. Evans on board for a short period of time.
Yes, sir.
Good choice.
Any other questions, or any other, got them all down there. Got any questions up? Okay, seeing none. This is the second call to the public, uh, first I'd, I'd, what I told you earlier still stands, Denise, you got three minutes or thereabout.
Well, I just, you today, don't even go there.
I said or thereabout.
You let that people read forever.
I wanna go home, too. Denise Colert, Florence Gardens, Florence, Arizona. I am a resident of Florence, so I'm gonna speak as a resident of Florence. I spoke the last time about this, I'm not saying that I'm in favor of marijuana because I'm up here speaking. I agree one hundred percent with what Tommy said a little while ago, and I said it the night, the other time we had this discussion about the, about the clinic, the dispensaries being so much safer. And about a week or two after that meeting, somebody that was growing marijuana in Phoenix had his home broke into and his marijuana swal- stolen. So that is exactly what can happen, and that homeowner could possibly be hurt, injured, killed by some irrational person. I think having a dispensary is the safest, soundest way to do this. The voters voted, we may not like it, there's a lot of things that voters vote on that we don't like, but we have to live with it, it's the law. So I think we need to get on with this and quit trying to throw all kinds of roadblocks in this poor man's face, and give it a shot, let him try it, if there's a problem, we have law in this town to take care of it. The, the examples they were giving was about it being in a, where there were homes and people were outside smoking, that's not what we're talking about doing in this town, that isn't the way the law was passed, so we couldn't, wouldn't have that situation. Drugs, there are more problems with drugs out of people's homes than there are with marijuana. We need to get on with this, we, we really need to stop doing this. And as far as people getting their drugs, I'm gonna guess that ninety percent of them get it through the mail because it's cheaper, they aren't going out to Safeway or over to Coolidge to buy their drugs, unless it's something that comes up unexpectedly when they've gone to the doctor. It comes in the mail, it's where I get all mine from. We've gotta, we've gotta go forward with this and quit dilly-dallying. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Hearing none, call for the council comment. Ruben?
You know, I, I just wanna bring up that sometime in your life, you look back at your history and then wonder where did it all go, and with Tom Selaya turning fifty today, you know, I just thought, I'm gonna call you out, just wanna wish him a happy birthday.
Oh. I didn't know about that one. I wish somebody would've notified me of that, we would've had a special presentation.
Yeah, we could've had a cake or a special present-
I went to a council meeting on my birthday note.
Tom? Tara?
We had a fabulous, um, what am I trying to say here? Outturn this past Saturday for the town of Florence and looking towards our annexation. We had a great show with our police, our fire, and everybody that came out with the presentations from the parks and rec, I just wanna say thank you.
Yep.
I just wanna compliment Public Works on, uh, the sidewalk project down on Main Street, now that it's almost finished, it looks really nice, and I've heard a lot of compliments on it. People at first weren't real sure, but I've heard every, everything I've heard lately has been real positive on it now that they can really see what the end result is, so I just wanted to let, let them know.
Laura?
I don't have anything to add.
Couple of things, one, uh, Tommy, happy birthday, I, uh, glad to know that I can remember when you were born. We lost a, a good citizen of Florence just last week, a lot of people may not have known it, uh, it was in the newspaper, very quiet, uh, he came in here and he was one of the first developers to actually come in here and do what he said, and that was Howard Cotton. A lot of the, uh, apartment buildings in town, Howard built them, he got them, he got them going, and he kept them up. Uh, he was proud of, he was a proud owner of, of his apartment, so, we're gonna miss Howard, and that kinda hurts. The other thing is, uh, Bill said the Main Street, uh, again, thank the merchants for putting up with us, we're just about done with this portion of it, then we can, just can get it torn up again next year with a streetscape project. Uh, as Tara mentioned, we had a good turnout of people at the, uh, pre, or the annexation signing out at Oasis on Saturday, got quite a few signatures, we're on our way to doing the annexation. Uh, it looks like it's gonna be successful, and I'm happy to hear that. Uh, Sheriff Babu is out there and saw exactly what we're doing, and, and he didn't express comment one way or the other, but I was glad to see him out there as a county official, at least we know somebody from the county's interested in what Florence is doing. The other thing I'd like to tell Wayne is thank you very much for all the work and having to put up with me, uh, to get ADOT to take care of that problem on seventy-nine B. Uh, many of you don't know it, but Wayne and, and Charles and I met with ADOT, what, twice, three times, something like that, and plus letters and telephone communications and me attending the state board meetings, but they are gonna open up where we can, the people coming from Tucson can turn left and come in and go, either go to Coolidge or down south, so that's gonna be taken care of, they supposed to have already started working on that, I understand they've already got material out there, so, if we cooperate with ADOT and rattle the right cages, we get things done. Again, thank you very much, and again, happy birthday, Tommy, uh, hope you have fifty or a hundred and fifty more. Is that, I need a motion?
Make a motion to the chairman.
Second.
Yeah, motion and second to the chairman, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried.